We're going to call this meeting to order. Today's date is November the 6th, 2023. This is the TELCITY Common Council. If everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. All right. First item is adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda as presented? Okay. We have a motion made by Larry to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Phillip. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item is presentation of minutes and approval. These are from your October the 2nd and your October 16th. Is there any changes or corrections to those minutes?
Chris, I have a question. And Connie, I think I sent your message on this, but on the October 2nd minutes, the paragraph immediately preceding comments of citizens?
Yes. I changed that. I did update that this morning, and I send a new set of minutes out to all the council members. Or I intend it to. Did you all see that?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. And I did, that was just not worded correctly at all. I don't, I don't know what happened, but...
So this is the one before the change?
This is the one before the change, yes. This was, this was printed off on Friday already or something. So yeah, that change has been made.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, do you want to do those separate or together? Okay. Is that, do you want to make a motion to approve it then?
Sure.
Okay, good. There's a motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item is comments of citizens. If there are any citizens that would like to make any comments, come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please, for the minutes. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee and ward reports. We'll start first with Larry Kleeman, Ward 1.
Okay. Had a busy month. I referred four streets to the mayor and the street department for patching and... Some of that's going on, some of it's going on in November, and some of it will be deferred to the first of the year. I've referred four, four different streets that were in my district. On October 7th, I was able to attend the annual on the table event that was held in Derby this year. On October the 10th, I attended the recognition for city employees of the mayor. October the 12th, I attended a common council meeting regarding their budget. On October the 14th, I attended the FOP Back the Blue Benefit Barbecue that was held at the Voyage River Rooms. On the, October the 14th, I attended the TELCITY Marching Marksmen Community Performance at Legion Field. On October the 16th, for the Parks Department to save them a little bit of time, I drove to Grandview and picked up the refurbished plaque that is now at Sunset Park. There was a nice article and picture in the paper of the 1929 plaque. If you haven't seen it, you need to go see it. I mean, it really is, they did a great job. The detail in that plaque is, is something to see. It cost the city $729 bucks, so I'm glad we got that done. The, I attended an electric board meeting on October the 17th. I attended the 100th anniversary of the TELCITY Historical Society on October the 23rd. At the invitation of Andy Hicks, I met with Andy on October the 27th to review the TELCITY Electric Department budget. I attended a Habitat home dedication on October the 30th at 46 Ninth Street, which is the second in home they've built in that area of town, and the third home will be built hopefully during 2024. November the 1st, we had a plan commission meeting, a brief plan commission meeting. And on November the 3rd, I attended the United Way Ribbon Cutting and Open House for the Angel Tree and their little offices. So that concludes my report.
Had a busy month.
To us.
All right. Ward 2, Julie Koner?
It's hard going after Larry.
I know, all right. Larry was everywhere.
I also attended the Plan Commission last Wednesday. We did approve the plan. I can't think of the name of the, the new hearing place.
It's Audio, well, no, Audiology.
Listen, listen up, isn't it? It's the name of the company.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's going to be right next to where logos used to be. That's where the new building's going to be. They're supposed to start that fairly soon, I believe. There was also an LEPC meeting last Tuesday afternoon. I could not get off work, and Gary graciously attended it for me. I'm also dealing with just one citizen in my district that's having issues with a neighbor and some trash in the yard. And just on a positive note, I was at the new park on 32nd, 31st Street, and someone came up to me, I was there with my granddaughter, to let me know how wonderful it was and just to let the city know they did something really good. She goes there all the time with her grandkids, and she just, just thinks it's just one of the things she's done in a while, so it's nice to hear.
Good.
That is all.
All right. Ward 3, Phillip Simpson.
Hey. No report really. Parks look great and toured several of them this month.
Good.
So that's all I got.
All right. Well, thank you. Ward 4, Mr. Gary Morton.
Okay, again, I've reported on this before, but I'll bring it up to date a little bit. Drainage issue there in Camden. People go there, have a lot of problems, especially, you know, in the winter and spring. So we've been working on that. Kenny Simpson has been doing some studies there as far as drainage. And I think Chris, our director, met with him, I think, one day this week for a final. And of course, it's a key there, I mean, the key is what needs to be done and how much can we afford to do. Again, after we get the drainage taken care of, I think the next step will be to maybe lay some concrete pads there in front of those dumpsters, so when people get out of their cars and so forth, they won't be waiting in muddy water. So that's, that's going to be the main, the goal, is to get that hopefully taken care in the next year or so. That's about all I have.
Okay. All right. And councilman at large, Mr. John Little.
I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Nothing to report. Any statement from the city attorney or clerk treasurer?
Sorry, nothing.
No?
Okay.
Can't think of anything right now.
All right. Well, moving on, we do not have anything under O business, so we'll move right down to new business. Item A, 2024 TELCITY Electric Department Budget. Counsel, you should have had this emailed to you. I know Larry, you had said you had met with Andy in October regarding it. We'll, we'll talk about item A and the budget. Item A and B kind of, they go together. I guess we'll leave mainly the discussion under A, we're voting the B. All right. Does anybody have questions regarding the TELCITY Electric Department budget? We have Andy Hicks, the general manager, Paige Shank, the CFO, and JB Land, the board chair, and Joe Malone, you vice chair? Okay. I thought so, but I didn't want to be wrong, so. We do have a couple of his board members, so if you have any questions, I'm sure they'd be glad to answer them. Why, it's like silence. Counsel, do you want, you want Andy to go over it just briefly, or?
Well, did you buy that? Did you finally receive that bucket truck?
No.
No. They did send me a schedule of, I guess what I'll say, it is supposed to start construction of that truck the week before Thanksgiving, so in a week, a couple of weeks. And they're estimated to get it the first of March.
Okay.
So up to this point, it's always been, in next quarter, next quarter. But this time, they actually did send me a schedule of the process of building it. So I'm hopeful we'll have it the first quarter of next year, but hopefully not.
Can I ask, oh, I'm putting a spot, but you did lock in the price when you, okay. Because it's, I swear, I was 2020, you ordered it. I'm not sure if that was quite right.
When they deliver it, he can always say, we'll pay you next quarter.
Yeah, yeah. When you deliver it, pay him next quarter.
Yeah, so the price, the price has, I don't have these all paid, the price has gone about $8,000 for the chassis, but everything is locked.
You don't need that.
Anything, any other price increase would have to be approved by us, by both parties, so.
Okay.
They sent me that the other day. And just for as work, I've gotten some quotes for future trucks, you know, just looking at the lead times, they're seven, eight years out. The price is not going down. The last inter-truck, they actually, we got one quoted, it was $380,000. We got ours, I think, 2018, it was $260,000, I believe. He called me a month ago and said, Andy, we just got one from the line. Everything, the customer backed out. I was like, sure, what's the price? $495,000. I was like, go to the next person. So they're out there, but they're seven, eight year lead time, I remember right now. So I'm hopeful that we'll get ours first next quarter with the bucket, the price we got.
Seven to eight years? I know you guys, you might be able, you need it, but you might be able to sell that bucket truck for more than you paid for it. You might be able to make a profit on this. You might be able to make a profit on this one. How about that, invest in those?
Yeah, but refresh my memory, you told me, I've got this figure somewhere, but...
Your budget is purchase power.
Yep. So if you look at our budget this year, it's $20,000, $82,490. 80% of that is out of our, out of our control. That's roughly $17,000. $15,000 of that is now the straight rate for our wholesale provider. $1 million of that is appreciated consistently. And then Tyler and the city employees that we provide as a service to the electric department is around $200,000. 14% of our budget, which is roughly $2.8 million, goes to our tour. They roll, they operate all. So we probably buy that under that $5,000 threshold, hits this 14%.
And you also, one of the things you explained to me on Page 3, I guess, the underground boring work, going to be doing some boring work in anticipation of being able to place some lines underground that are currently overhead and particular interest me in the Burglum Hills area, there are no alleys up there, so they're hard for you guys to get access to. You have to drive through people's yards.
So this year, this year, $137,000, we got a lot of budget. Definitely want to point out that it's not a, not a, the budget, budget of our operations for each side, we actually, we allocate, allocate for that. For the houses, the house, the building, we've got, we've got, we have lots of sites on the side of the, some of those properties, some of those alleys, so they're, they're sold, they're underground. Make it, make it more feasible to maintain. There's also, there's exceptions, say 11th Street, services are behind the house, the house now, underground there, getting rid of those areas at all. And then further up the hill, there's underground too, a couple of houses, a couple of levels down. Actually, actually have a road to drive above the corner. That wire is about four years old, and these, and these, so starting that process. And then a couple of other stuff, stuff, or, or, guy, guy, kind of wait, wait and see our, our potential development downtown. Hotel and some stuff around the block.
Connie, what's the ordinance number on this?
1208.
All right, counsel, is there a motion to have the first reading of ordinance number 1208? Motion made by Larry, is there a second? Larry made the motion, just need someone to second it.
Second.
Second it by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are you reading it, Jeff?
I'll do it.
All right.
Ordinance number 1208. Thank you.
I'll do the second.
Of the common, thank you. Of the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana, to accept and adopt the budget of the TELCITY Electric Department for the fiscal period 2024. Whereas all municipal utilities are required by the state of Indiana pursuant to Indiana Code Section 8-1.5-3-4, Section 4A6, to submit a budget to the municipal legislative body. And whereas the Board of Directors of TELCITY Electric Department by its resolution number R231017B has adopted a budget. And whereas the resolution of the Board of Directors of TELCITY Electric Department was presented to the Honorable Mayor and the Common Council for first reading on November 6, 2023. And whereas the Board of Directors of TELCITY Electric Department respectfully requests that the budget be accepted and adopted as presented. Now therefore be it resolved that the budget as presented by the TELCITY Electric Department is hereby accepted and adopted. Be it further resolved that a copy of the budget be placed on file in the office of the clerk treasurer of the city of TELCITY and the office of the TELCITY Electric Department by resolution of the common council of the city of TELCITY in regular session November 6, 2023, approved by his honor the mayor at the time and date recorded below. Signature in line for Chris Cale, attested by Connie Berger. I will loosely reference that attached as an exhibit is the spreadsheet that shows the adopted budget by the TELCITY Electric Board, as well as a copy of resolution R231017B that was adopted by the TELCITY Electric Board.
Okay, counsel. You've had a first read of ordinance number 1208. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only?
So moved.
Motion made by Phillip, second?
Second.
Hello? By Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jeff, second, third reading by title only.
Second reading, ordinance number 1208 of the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana, to accept and adopt the budget of the TELCITY Electric Department for the fiscal period 2024. Third reading, ordinance number 1208 of the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana, to accept and adopt the budget of the TELCITY Electric Department for the fiscal period 2024.
Okay, counsel, you've had first, second, third reading of ordinance number 1208. Is there a motion to adopt? Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
I think Julie beat on that.
I think Julie actually got in silently there.
Julie, second that before we adopt. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance stands adopted. All right. Thank you.
I want to say one thing before I say, um, we're hoping to have a sensational one first, first, as I talked about it. I'd like to thank the board, my staff, and y'all. The fact, the fact that money reserves are very good, they say that are significantly amount of money with the current, with the current situation. So I think that's, deserves, deserves a round of applause, a pound, a pound of that. Really, you have to take out a lot, so. Great job. I hope, I hope to be in that board for future management.
Well, it's great planning on you guys for also, because that replaces a seven year old substation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, guys. All right. Next item on the agenda is a resolution ratifying the transfer of assets between the city of TELCITY and the TELCITY Electric Department. Connie, what's the resolution number on this?
2023-21.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah, you're going to earn your pay tonight. That next one's coming up. You ain't going to enjoy it.
Ah.
Yeah, the other one's...
I can handle it.
Okay.
I'm a big reader.
All right.
I would just need the counsel to authorize me to read this one, and I will do it.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolution number 2023-21, a resolution ratifying transfer of assets between the city of TELCITY and the TELCITY Electric Department. Whereas the city of TELCITY has acquired new light poles to be installed on Main Street and Washington Street, consisting of 28 poles to be installed on Washington Street and 48 poles to be installed on Main Street. And whereas it is the desire of the city of TELCITY to donate said poles to the TELCITY Electric Department. And whereas the TELCITY Electric Department has agreed to accept said light poles and add them to their asset list. And whereas the poles intended for installation on Washington Street have a value of $363,390.60, which is the equivalent of $12,978.23 per pole. And whereas the poles to be installed on Main Street have a value of $630,726.60, which is the equivalent of $13,140.14 per pole. And whereas the TELCITY Electric Department has agreed to be responsible for the installation and maintenance of the lights and poles. And whereas it is agreed between the city of TELCITY and the TELCITY Electric Department, the TELCITY Electric Department will not include the poles and lights referenced herein in their calculation of any payment in lieu of taxes due and owing to the city of TELCITY. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana, that. Number one, the agreement between the city of TELCITY and the TELCITY Electric Department recited herein is hereby ratified. Number two, a copy of this resolution shall be filed with the clerk treasurer of the city of TELCITY, adopted the 6th day of November, 2023 by the TELCITY Common Council, Perry County, Indiana. Signature line for Chris Cale, attested by Connie Berger.
Okay. I, for what it's worth, I don't know if it's important to do, but 40 years from now, they're going to be like, what poles are they on Main Street? I'm just saying that they're referencing, should we reference between TEL Street and Payne? Because they already had the ones in our asset from Jefferson to TEL. Those weren't part of the project. Should we reference between what blocks they're talking about? Because all it says is 48 poles on Main Street. No one's going to know. Would that cause you any problems, Paige, for your assets? Should you, I don't...
No, I didn't know if we could have that, trying to ask the poll numbers.
Let's do that. That would be better. That would be better. Okay.
So I think what I would suggest then is that we will add to this that by interlineation.
I'm just saying in the future, no one, no, I mean, I know, and I'll be getting a phone call asking, or Phillip and I, you know...
Which poles were they?
20 years from now.
That's true. I mean, it...
So this has been done prior for the poles?
The other poles, yeah.
The other poles?
Yeah, they already own them. So now all the, they own all the, I'm going to call them decorative. It's probably a better way to put it.
What I would suggest, and I have written in here, is a number three on the top of the second page, that say, a list of the specific pole numbers shall be affixed here too.
There you go. I can live with that.
So if we can consider the resolution amended, we will print a clean copy that includes that for final execution.
And attach that to it.
We will attach it.
Okay. So counsel, resolution only requires one reading. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Phillip, is there a second? Second it by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is ordinance advance payments. This is the one that Jeff's going to read. Thank you all for being here. Is this 1209 or 1207, this next ordinance?
Yeah, you guys. Thanks for everything.
All right. Jeff, this is ordinance number 1209. I'm going to let you read this one, please.
I can do it.
This is definitely a lot larger one.
I think I'll just move the blessing of the council to begin.
Is there a motion to have ordinance number 1209 for the first reading? Motion made by Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Second it by Gary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, Jeff, 1209's all yours.
Ordinance number 1209, an ordinance authorizing purchasing agents of the city of TELCITY to make advance payments on contracts for public works projects, goods, and services. Whereas the Indiana legislature recently enacted Public Law 181, which amends Indiana Code Section 5, 11, 10, 1.6, to permit political subdivisions to make advance payments for purchases of goods and services. And whereas Indiana Code Section 5, 10, 5, 11, 10.1, 10, 1.6, D3, and 4, sorry for that, allow a political subdivision to make advance payments to contractors to enable them to purchase materials needed for a public works project and advance payments for goods or services before the goods or services are delivered or completed if the fiscal body of the political subdivision authorizes making advance payments and the goods or services are otherwise purchased in accordance with applicable law. And whereas pursuant to Indiana Code Section 5, 11, 10, 1.6E, an advance payment made for goods and services or to enable the purchase of materials for a public works project may not exceed the lesser of 50% of the entire cost of the contract or $2 million. And whereas pursuant to Section 30.50 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of TELCITY, the clerk treasurer is a fiscal officer of the city of TELCITY and shall perform fiscal duties of the city of TELCITY as the common council may require by ordinance. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code Section 36-4-6-2, the TELCITY Common Council is the legislative body of the city of TELCITY, and the TELCITY Common Council previously established and adopted rules for public purchases by designated purchasing agents of the city by ordinance 814 as amended, as codified in the Code of Ordinances of the City of TELCITY, Section 35.01 et cetera. Whereas it is determined that it is necessary and fiscally efficient to authorize city purchasing agents to make advance payments in accordance with applicable law for goods or services before they are delivered or completed. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana, that. Section 1, a purchasing agent of the city of TELCITY as defined and set forth in City Common Council Ordinance 814, codified in the Code of Ordinances of the City of TELCITY, Section 35.01 et cetera, may allow advance payment for the purchase of goods and services either directly or as part of a public works project consistent with and to the fullest extent permitted by law, and is further limited by the purchasing agent for the purchase. Section 2, the solicitation for a public works contract providing for advance payments for contractors to purchase materials for public works projects under Indiana Code Section 5-11-10-1.6 must include the following information. A, that the city of TELCITY will make advance payments to contractors to enable contractors to purchase materials. B, any limitations on the amount of advanced payments that will be made. C, requirements for documentation relating to making advanced payments to contractors for materials. D, any other information about advanced payment for materials the city of TELCITY considers useful to contractors that make offers. Section 3, the city fiscal officer or the city fiscal officers designee must do all of the following when advance payments are made for goods or services prior to delivery of goods or completion of service. A, track prepayments by defining the prepayment on a purchase order. B, create a prepayment invoice that is associated with the purchase order. And C, require insurance or a surety bond in the amount of the prepayment if the amount of the prepayment is more than $150,000. Section 4, advance payments made under Section 1 and Section 2 may not exceed the lesser of the following. A, 50% of the entire cost of the contract, or B, $2 million. Section 5, all other requirements for the payment of public works projects, goods, and services by the city of TELCITY remain in effect, and ordinances not directly contradicted by the provisions of this ordinance remain in full force and effect. Section 6, the sections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, phrases, and words of this ordinance are separable. And if any section, paragraph, sentence, clause, phrase, or word shall be declared unconstitutional, invalid, or unenforceable by, unenforceable by the valid judgment or decree of a court of competent jurisdiction, such unconstitutionality, invalidity, or unenforceability shall not affect any of the remaining phrases, clauses, sentences, or words of this ordinance. Section 7, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana, this 6th day of November, 2023. Signature line for Chris Cale, attested by Connie Berger.
Okay. Counsel, we've had the first reading of ordinance number 1209. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Phillip. All those in favor signify...
I have a question.
Okay.
Well...
Any further discussion about that? There you go.
Is the purpose of this to help smaller contractors get city work?
To help smaller contractors? Well, just help contractors in general that may need the payment to purchase the materials that they're going to use in the project. Or to, I don't know if it would be acquire subcontractors for services or whatever the situation may be.
So they don't, if they don't...
This was something that was discussed at our municipal law seminar last spring. Several municipalities were expressing some concern that they were having trouble contracting because many contractors didn't want to do municipal work because they knew they weren't getting paid until the back end. And so, you know, you had a lot of these, and that's why they've got these numbers. You know, $2 million is a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, for some municipalities, that's not a particularly large project. And so they were running into these, like, what I'd call medium-sized projects, they were having trouble getting contractors to bid on.
To a small company, $2 million is a lot of money.
Yeah.
To a larger company, it's no sweat, but...
And with the supply chain, the way that...
Oh, yeah.
That's just...
Makes a challenge.
Yeah. So that's the reason behind it. It's not to line anybody's pockets ahead of time. It's intended to allow these contractors the flexibility to move on these projects.
Okay.
So we had a motion that was made by Gary, and it was seconded by Phillip. Any further discussion? This is for second, third reading by title only is what we're voting on. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jeff, you want me to read second, third reading by title only?
Second reading, ordinance number 1209, an ordinance authorizing purchasing agents of the City of Tell City to make advance payments on contracts for public works, projects, goods, and services. Third reading, ordinance number 1209, an ordinance authorizing purchasing agents of the City of Tell City to make advance payments on contracts for public works, projects, goods, and services.
You've had the first, second, third reading ordinance for 1209. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Are you none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Moving on. Item D, discussion of cemetery pricing. Okay. So we're not taking any motions or votes tonight or increases. If you look, it's kind of got a little introduction there about what's going on with it from Alvy Stiff. You'll see one plot for resident, one for non, then you get your current rate, then you got your proposed rate. At the last Board of Works, it seems like he...
This is the insert from the Board of Works meeting.
Yeah. He went into what other communities, and I don't have that in front of me, I apologize, charge for basically the same service. Once you buy that plot, once somebody's buried there, that's all the money you're ever going to get from it. Yeah, they don't pay rent every month or anything like that. I'm not going to be a smart guy, but I mean, they don't.
If we had Elvis or somebody buried here, we could maybe charge.
And I'm trying to be sympathetic towards this about making it sound funny.
Did you want that from Alvy?
Yeah, let me see that.
Yeah. Alvy, just, Alvy did a little comparison.
This is not for, like I said, a vote tonight. This is for discussion. This is for you to do your own research if you want. If you guys want a copy of what Alvy passed out, I can scan this in and get it to you Wednesday, just consideration. But for one plot like in Jasper's, 800. Honeyberg, one plot is 1,125, but that includes the open and closing. So you look down, there's a different fee, so you've got to add those together to get that. Boonville, 600. Hawesville, for one plot, is 1,000. Lewisport's, for one plot, 600. And then you also got to consider churches, you know, they're a little different there of that on their pricing there. And it goes into the open and closing ages, tent services and so forth, but she's not proposing to increase that, I don't believe. One thing...
The tent service was going to stay the same.
Yeah, I think, yeah, 150, 150. So Austin, does the council want a copy of this?
I think that, I think that would be...
I was at the meeting when they...
Okay, I'll scan it into sentience, just so you have it. Ain't going to hurt. The only thing that I would be concerned about is your non-residential rate. I think we should continue that.
I do too. And he did not recommend that, but I agree with you because the city in Tell City pays for the upkeep and maintenance of that cemetery.
The taxpayers do it, yeah. So I mean, it's something to consider. I know it's very sensitive when you come to people who's lost loved ones. That's a very tough thing and...
Well, when you compare though with what Alvy's done, and I, again, just like you, I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, but when you go through that comparison, it's kind of like the Tell City Greenwood Cemetery is the palper cemetery around here. You know, everybody else is more expensive and I just, I don't know that it's fair to our citizens that we are so much cheaper than everybody else, as you said, particularly when you have a non-resident that can come in here cheaper as a non-resident than they, somebody that's from Jasper could be buried here cheaper than they could be buried in the cemetery at Jasper as a resident. And so there's some degree of fairness to our living citizens right now that we are not so much cheaper than everybody else. You know, eventually this cemetery is going to fill up. And so what we don't want is people forum shopping for the cheapest cemetery to bury their loved ones in.
Instead of having a separate rate for non-residents, I wonder if it could, wonder if it could be tied to the resident rate and just add like 5% or 10%. So come up with some percentage that we can feel and just add that so that we don't...
Well, while we're talking about it, if you guys think about it, get an idea, consensus, you can email Jeff what you think and put in there, and if you all certain number, you could average them out and say, there it is.
Don't ask me to do the math. There's a reason I have somebody else, pay somebody else to do it.
Well, I'll do the math. I can do that.
And this is the thing, I think, that we would like to see get done before the first of the year, so these would go in effect.
We'll have this at our December meeting. So just be thinking, doing some research.
And I'm...
And if you don't feel five, if you think if we're going to 315 to 500, it should be 600, you guys have that right to make that change. Just whatever, or whatever, you know.
And one of the things that you keep in mind is, and Alvy mentioned this as well, is that the township trustee pays for a lot of burials around here. There are a lot of folks that cannot afford the cost of burying their loved ones, and the township trustee pays for a lot of them. We're not looking to hamstring the township trustee because of the number of funerals that they pay for either. I would encourage council members to reach out to the township trustee and ask them about it. I don't think she'd be at all reluctant to share information about the costs that they've paid with regard to burials around here. I have not had a discussion with her about this specific issue, so I honestly don't know what her reaction would be to that, but that's somebody I would suggest you talk to.
One more thing to consider too, if you read that top paragraph, it talks about the price went up by $5 for four years. It is increased every year. He's recommending just make it at a price and then revisit it four years. Do you want to do that? Or do you want to increase it every year by $5, $10 again, up to four years? You know, it's, it's whatever. This is your all ordinance, and you could, if you think 500 is too much, you want to make it less, you can do that too. So look at it, think about it. Email Jeff and I and Connie or all, whatever.
Reach out to Alvy.
Reach out to Alvy. And just hopefully maybe in our, well, we need to, in our December meeting actually make a vote.
Don't we have a cemetery committee?
They propose, this is from them.
This is what they have said, yes.
Do you serve on that, Gary? Is it? Little comment there about the future of that cemetery. We did all sorts of kind of studies out there, and the present size of the cemetery gives us at least 30 more years. We've got 30 more years there. But the one factor that is changing all around our nation is cremations. And again, with cremations, you can put two cremated remains in one plot. So, you know, 30 may be a low side there, might be another 10 years based on that. Now, some people said, where are we going to go if we want to expand? Scott Dixon has land bordering us on whatever side that is there. He is not interested in selling that at all, you know, so we're not going to get any from Scott. We have an area there, kind of on the backside there, but it's not usable because it's very steep. It's almost straight up and down. Some have wondered about the area across the street, which is owned by, I think, a Labhart family. That would require tons and tons of dirt because that whole backside is low. You'd have to put 15 to 20 feet of dirt there. Very expensive. Now, the one area that a council at some point might want to look at is the block there, those houses right to the direction wise, west. There's like three houses there. One there is kind of empty most of the time. That would be an area that we could possibly look at down the road, purchase those three homes and expand that cemetery because it borders us right there. You know, that would be right in that same area. So we have looked at that. So if you want to know, we've got 30 years approximately, give or take.
One thing that we could consider that really wouldn't cost us anything. You know, there are cemetery plots out there owned by families that died 100-plus years ago, and they have descendants, and they're just, I don't want to call it abandoned, but there'd never be anybody buried there because the heirs are, you know, here, or that family moved away, or they all just passed away. And we, I don't know, Jeff, that's going to take some research...
To figure out how we...
When someone buys a plot, how long does it actually stay theirs?
Well, there's a thing there.
Because I could go in there right now, Gary, and buy 12 plots if I want. If I want to spend that amount of money, and this is only, you know, say it's only me, and I pass away and I've got those plots, that's 12 spots, 11 spots now that's basically wasted.
But the problem there on that is, let's say there's nine or 10 people scattered around this country that have, you know, that's a relative distance of theirs.
Yeah.
If just one of those people would say, no, I don't want to sell it, you're stuck.
Well, moving forward...
It takes unanimous, you know, so I, the cost of getting one lot there from a family that all lived in California or New Mexico or something, the cost would be exorbitant to get them to, the legal cost, right, Jeff? To say, hey, yeah.
It could add up, that's for sure.
I could be wrong, but I think we have something, one of our ordinances that states that already, that after so many years, you lose it.
I have some recollection of that.
I don't know why.
I need to look at it again.
Well, I've never seen it.
When I first came in, and maybe I'm confusing with something, another ordinance in another community, but when we start selling, when we sell the current lots, we could fix this now, moving forward, it may be hard to fix going back.
That's always harder than...
But you also got to look at the trend of...
Always harder than ring terms.
Huh?
We have to use it or lose it?
Well, I mean, that's a pretty point way to put it. But, I mean, it's a shame that we have all these empty spots that can't be used. And then for us to go spend how many thousands to buy land...
I don't think it's a shame, Mayor, I personally.
But also you got to look at the...
I understand what you're saying.
The trends of cremation too. That's another thing, you know, as time goes on, that may take 30, may stretch it to 50.
So the plan is to try to act on something after the December meetings?
December meeting, that's correct.
Ideally.
All right. Sorry, I talk a lot. Now, item E, additional appropriation. Connie, I'll let you drive that bus if you want.
Okay. These are additional appropriations that are needed for the remainder of the year. Now, I may have some more yet at your December meeting, but this is additional appropriation resolution 2023-22, where it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in the annual budget now thereafter. Be it ordained by the City of Tell City, Perry County, Indiana, for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for the purposes specified subject to the laws governing the same. The City General Fund, Board of Works budget, repair of buildings, 25,000. Pool utilities, 30,000. Cemetery, cemetery additional labor, 6,000. Park and Recreation Department lease payment on mowers, 11,250, for a total of 72,250. Riverboat Fund, riverboat phone, it's for the phone system here in the court, City Hall, of $3,000. Total Riverboat Fund, $3,000. William Tell Complex Supplies, 4,000, and the total for that is 4,000. Adopted this 5th day of September, September? That's not right. I didn't change that. It's November. Sorry. And it's the sixth day.
Okay.
So I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of these that I can answer or what, but these are additionals that we are needing.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? Are you none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, I'll pass this down for everyone to signature.
All right. Next, we have transfers under item F, resolution, what number?
2023-23. And just a little explanation on this. These are, I've been looking ahead to see, instead of doing so many transfers after the, right at the end of the year, and that we needed to do these to get some of the line items out of the red, and so that people knew what they had left, what departments know what they have left in their budgets. So I have gone ahead and worked up quite a few of these to get everything in the red, out of the red, I hope, and to not have to do many transfers at the end of the year. But I don't know if that's going to be work or not.
All right. You want me to do this one for you?
Doesn't matter.
Resolution 2023-23, resolution by the Tell City Common Council to make necessary transfers within the classifications within several budgets. General Fund, transfer. Do you want me to read the, from the...
I'd just say from office.
Okay, from office.
No, I'd just say from office.
Okay, I was like, I can read them all. From office equipment to duties, mayor, within the mayor's budget, $500. Transfer from computer and support to publications of legal notices within the clerk treasurer's budget, $1,500. Transfer computer support from, and also from office equipment to the subscriptions and duties from the clerk treasurer's budgets, total 1,500. Transfer from gasoline and oil to operations supplies within the Board of Works, that's $10,000. Transfer from travel to CDL training within the Board of Works, $60. Transfer from utilities, police station, to the telephone within the Board of Works budget, $8,000. Transfer from the police dog training and handling to physical examinations within the Tell City Police Department budget, $700. Transfer from the police and dog training and handling to supplies within the police department budget, $1,000. Transfer from pool salaries, repairs, and equipment to pool supplies, $13,511 within the pool budget. Transfer from the equipment to utilities within the pool budget, $4,490. Transfer equipment to the operating supplies within the cemetery budget, $500. Transfer from travel and telephone and equipment to the repairs and equipment within the fire department budget, $1,450. Transfer from travel to office supplies within the planning and zoning, $125. Transfer from general maintenance and repair to recreation supplies within the parks and recreation budget, $10,000. Transfer from parks improvement to equipment within the parks budget, $3,000. Transfer from EDC seminars and training, from EDC marketing, and from the EDC equipment. Is it all from O to something?
Land development, EDC land development.
EDC land development for $1,200.
$1,200.
Is that all of them?
No. No.
Well, I've only got two pages.
I've only got two pages also.
So you gotta finish it, Connie.
Well, Doty didn't. Oh, I know what it is. I, I don't know. I'll, I'll finish.
All right.
Local law equipment to local law enforcement training and travel, travel and training within the law enforcement budget for three thousand dollars, and from the SRO repair maintenance and to SRO travel and to SRO equipment for one thousand dollars out of the public safety budget. And then I did add one more today that you didn't have on your copy, and it is from maintenance supervisor to maintenance labor within the park and recreation budget for one thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay. Counsel, I'll, if this gets approved tonight, I'll have, either I'll try to get myself this week, Doty's out this week, or next week, I'll email you a copy with the revisions on it, a full copy, so you have it for your records. Yeah.
On the very first page, the third one.
Okay.
Should that be two thousand, and so the fifteen hundred?
Yeah. If you add that up, that is. Good.
Oh!
All right, you get, you win.
You win.